Doesn't exist.
Sure?
Doesn't exist.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, we convene to regular session at 7:01 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Bell.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. El Campo.
Here.
Ms. Fua.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Lahano.
Here.
Ms. Tahara.
Here.
Mr. O Chipinty.
Here.
Mrs. Zane Garrett.
Present.
Ms. Alvedine.
Here.
And Mr. Lee.
Here. Okay, Ms. Cole, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda this evening, Dr. Gloria?
There are no changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item 9A, Board Meeting Minutes from October 23rd, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And there is nothing to report out of closed session, so we will move on to item 11A, Student of the Month, Terranova High School. Ms. Cole?
The Jefferson Union High School District Student of the Month program is designed to recognize the many outstanding achievements within the school and in the community of the students in our district. Selected by their teachers and administrators, the Student of the Month exemplifies the degree of academic achievement, leadership, and community consciousness we would like to see in all of our students. Since only five of the roughly 4,200 students in our district receive this recognition, being chosen as a Student of the Month is quite an honor. Tonight, we will be recognizing the 2019-2020 November Student of the Month. Please join me in welcoming Amanda Murad, a senior at Terranova High School. Here tonight with Amanda is her mother, Debbie, her father, James, and her brother, Sean. Amanda Murad was unanimously selected by the Terranova administration, teachers, and staff as our Student of the Month. Amanda joined TN with a long resume of experience in youth sports, having played soccer, softball, gymnastics, basketball, cross-country, swimming, and volleyball. As a freshman, she joined our volleyball program where she was named by her team and coach as a rising freshman. Her successes continued in her senior year as she was named Team Captain and earned the accolade of Scholar-Athlete of the Week by Cal High Sports. Amanda's contribution to the Terranova community have not been limited to inside of the gym. She joined ASB as a sophomore, and through her work with Students in Action and Link Crew, Amanda has become an integral part of on-campus life at Terranova and in improving our school culture. This commitment to improving the experience of her fellow students was likely what drew Amanda to join the JUHSD Student Advisory Council, where she collaborated on improving food services and counseling services for her peers across the district. Amanda is currently serving as our 2019 ASB President and was instrumental in organizing our first week of Welcome, a school-wide event focused on celebrating the start of a new year and welcoming new students into our Tiger family. In her four years at Terranova, Amanda has always successfully balanced a full schedule with little to no direction from others. She has earned a cumulative grade point average of 4.190 by completing a sequence of enriched and AP classes at Terranova High School. She has made the principal's list each semester and was named a TN Math Department Award winner and was recently named the winner of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award. The DAR award recognizes and rewards individuals who possess the qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. These students are selected by their teachers and peers because they demonstrate these qualities to an outstanding degree. Amanda is a stellar representative of Terranova and Pacifica. She embodies Tiger pride, persistence, respect, integrate, and intelligence, and excellence. We hope our younger students learn from her willingness to participate, teamwork, bold ideas, and the fortitude to see them through to completion. Fortunately for us, we still have time left this school year for Amanda to leave more of her mark on campus before she graduates. Next year, Amanda aims to attend a UC campus and major in the STEM field. On behalf of the entire Terranova community, I congratulate you on your impressive four years. Tiger pride. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2019-2020 Jefferson Union High School District November Student of the Month, Amanda Murad.
Come around, take some photos.
We're in it too?
We go. We do?
Oh, okay. Yep.
Shouldn't Dr. Gloria be in it? Shouldn't Dr. Gloria be here?
I can't ever get her to give me the mic.
I know. Oh, yeah. Wow. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well, so before we move on to, I just would like to echo some of the stuff that was said. I am never not impressed by you. Anytime I'm in the room, I'm always pulled away at your leadership, your organizational skills, and how you keep everybody motivated in the group. And student advisory would not be the success it is without your leadership. So I am eternally grateful for all the hard work that you've done for us now these past two years. So very well deserved. Thank you.
I, working with you on the student advisory, just remember, we started the Student Advisory Council not knowing where it was going to go, you know? And we were just kind of building it as we went along because we knew we needed student voice. And when you came along and we asked, so maybe we should have some officers and who wants to be the chair? And you immediately said me. And so, completely, completely impressed with you. I also won the DAR Award, Good Citizen Award, when I was at Jeff. Yeah, so when I heard that, I went, oh. So we're sisters that way. So, but I'm so proud of you. I can't wait to hear more of you. Yes. You are full of bold ideas and looking forward to going to CSBA with you.
Congratulations again. Really well deserved. All right, we will move on. Item 12A, Board Report Out. We'll start at the far end of the table, Mr. El Campo.
Good evening, everyone. So back on, just backing track a little bit, October 25th, our school had our first Foods Day where all the clubs, sports, and stuff could sell food to all the students to build fundraising for their, for whatever they want to do. So like, band sold Spam Masubi, other clubs sold, other clubs sold lemonade, there was Chicken Alfredo, just a variety of foods that everyone could have. It was a really, a great success. Everyone was out there enjoying, enjoying the music, enjoying each other, enjoying the food. It was really nice. Moving forward a little bit, this last Friday, we had our football game against Cappuccino. I believe both, Varsity and JV, both won, so it was really nice for us. And then, last Saturday, we had a food pantry, another one, and it was really nice. More and more students turned out this time, which was really, really nice. We helped, it was held in the school's cafeteria. We helped set up the food, helped manage the food and all that to help make sure families could come in and get what they need to, and help out. And tonight was our, for our seniors, our Cash for College Night, where seniors could come in with their parents and help fill out their Cal Grant or their FAFSA, and it was really nice. I stayed for a little bit before I had to come here, and there was a lot of people there, so it was...
Hello, as for Westmore, last year, we had our first quad dance and, and, it was called Late Night Luau, Luau Theme on October 25th. There was a really good turn... Starting, starting early this November, like currently, Drama has their fall play called Once on This Island, and it is still, there are still shows coming up, and this Thursday is our Senior Panoramic, and yeah.
As for Terranova, we, last Friday, we had a football game against Kings Academy, so that was pretty cool. The band played, and band had a competition that Saturday where we also competed against Kings Academy, so that was kind of a cool bonding moment between football and band that we both got to compete against the same school. We also, our school is also having a fall play. We are doing The Princess Bride, so everyone's really excited about that, just classic movie favorite. I'm not sure exactly when the premiere is going to be, but probably fairly soon, so everyone's pretty excited about that. It's college season, so a lot of people are pretty stressed about that, but it's been really good. We've had some FAFSA preparation, during lunch, people were able to set up their FSAID. There was actually a UC kind of meeting last night at Terranova in the library that had a really good turnout, a lot of people there to get information about the personal insight questions. So that was really good, a lot of really good information. So, yeah, that's kind of business as usual.
Hi, so at Oceana, this week, we just started tryouts for our winter sports, which are girls' and boys' soccer, girls' and boys' basketball, and girls' and boys' wrestling. Last week, we had our third Halloween Fest, and the turnout was pretty good. We made profit, and each class sold their own food, so each class kind of got to bond when making, making their food and selling it. What else? This week, we had to rearrange our, our schedule because usually it's odd even, but we had to have, we have to have three even days in a row now because last week, two days got canceled from the power outage and a pipe broke, I think. Yeah, and then on Friday, we're having a Holocaust survivor speaking to our sophomore humanities so they can learn about, because they're learning about genocide, and they're actually studying the Holocaust right now. And what else? We were supposed to have our food fair or harvest fair starting soon too, but that actually had to get postponed because of the new food provider we have. They have like, they have, they have, I don't know, they sent us an email saying they have to be notified 30 days in advance, and the food sold has to fit into nutrition guidelines. So ASB is working with, like, trying to communicate the new policy to the clubs. Was that a problem for, for your food fair?
No, well, there were health guidelines, but the whole 30-day policy, I was unheard of, no.
And then, some things that our academic council is working on is trying to implement restorative practices, like, for chronically tardy students. So they're, like, instead of giving them detention, they're thinking of ways they can, like, help around campus, like cleaning up campus, for example. And, yeah, we also had a financial aid night last week to help people applying for FAFSA and everything like that. And I know that during our advisory, we have, we have a lot of, like, college application help workshops going on that a lot of people find helpful. And, yeah, that's it.
So really quickly to pitch it out, I mean, can we get the policy, just pull that and have it sent out to, to, just to ASB, just to remind them? Yeah, because it is that policy. The reason why is because they just need to track food sales. They don't want to over-prepare food if you're going to, so that's the reason why, but we can make sure you guys get that info.
We also put it in the recap so that all the board members know what it is too. Thank you. So, gosh, we did a lot between the last board meeting and this one. Like, we had our first JUHSD fair, so all our high schools were here in the DO, went to Oceana's Open House, our very important second session of the Race and Equity Task Force, and of course, last night, Student Advisory Council meeting. I always love hearing the students speak freely and trying to come up with solutions. But this week was pretty emotional for me because we lost someone in our community, Natty Fong. She's been instrumental in PTAs for over 30 years, and she was one of my mentors in PTA. And so, when I went to her service, there, of course, there were a lot of people, but one of the people I saw there was my kindergarten teacher. So, that was 50 years ago. My kindergarten teacher was there, and she remembered me. And that's how our community is. We're so close. And, you know, you start out just maybe helping stuff envelopes one day at school, and then you're on the school board. So, so I, we're going to say a few words about Natty, but she was really important to me, and, like, everyone here who does anything for our schools, you make an impact. Thank you.
We have had a busy month. Thank you for sharing, and everybody for keeping up. In the middle of October, the middle of the fall, especially in October, November, I know it's very busy for students. There are a lot of applications due for seniors. I know, for teachers, it's a, it's a heavy season, so for me, just keeping up with that has been a focus. But it has been good to be at different sites the last few weeks. We still have a few more, and looking forward to, yeah, the middle of the semester and sports season as well, so, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I actually also like to take a moment to honor Ms. Natty Fong. In my report tonight, I'm really saddened by her recent passing, and I just, we were actually talking a lot lately just about PTA because I'm also involved with the PTA, but, you know, I want to thank her family for sharing her with us. She has such a giving spirit, and she just, I didn't know her as long as Rosie did, but, you know, she really taught me a lot, how to be selfless, how to be caring for others, how to be a steward in our community, and really wanted to, I'm sorry, crying too, but really wanted to thank her for everything that she had done and for our community, and, you know, and we would definitely try to carry on her legacy with, you know, all the things that she was doing. And, you know, one of the things that she got me to start doing was the Betty Schulz Scholarship Fund, so I will keep on selling as much candy as I can for her, in honor of her, for, you know, all the students in the community, so that's it, sorry.
Yeah, just to piggyback, I mean, I think Natty touched so many different people, and that I became, I knew her before I became involved with JUHSD through state-level education advocacy. She was everywhere. And so, we worked together on statewide initiatives, trying to get more parents to vote. And again, due, due to public school funding, you know, we aren't viable if we don't have active parents and active PTAs, and so she's really built that structure so that her legacies are ongoing. And I think that very quietly behind the scenes, she held the community up. So I'm, you know, I wish we had done more to acknowledge what she'd done when she was here. And so I think that's the lesson I'm taking from this, is to really do more to acknowledge people while they're still with us. I did a lot of other things, but the, one other thing that I would like to highlight because they're in the house is that we're all adopting schools, and my school this year is Thornton. And they're here today, and so I spent half a day on campus, and I'm just very thankful that you guys let me spend time there and expressly spend time in classrooms, and I remember you, so I'm excited to see what you have to say today. We were in a class together.
All right, yeah, I think I was at a lot of the very similar events as everybody else was, you know? We had our various site meetings, you know, at Oceana and at Thornton. We had, you know, our Race and Equity work here with JUHSD, as well as last night, you know, with the San Mateo County School Board Association, and I was also on the call on Friday with the California School Board Association equity stuff. So it's really great to see that this work is really being done with, with us and with other school districts around the county and around the state. And the other thing I'll add is I did go to the Bay Shore Block Party a couple weeks ago, which was actually a lot of fun. Nice to see Dr. Gloria and Ms. Hawkins there to represent us, have a table out, give out candy, as well as just have all of our information out there for, for all the young, young students who were, who were present. And it was just a lot, wonderful community event that was really well done, put on by the Bay Shore School. So, Dr. D?
Thank you. And so I have to comment on, on Natty as well. You know, when I first started, a little more than two years ago, there were a flurry of introductions and people, all these people that I had to know. And I would agree, she's a very quiet, humble leader, and what she said to me is, "You're going to forget who I am, but in a few weeks, you know, let me know, I'll come in, I'll sit down, I'll explain everything to you." Because I didn't understand all of the, all of the parent structures that were across all of our communities, and she came in and shared her Google accounts with me, and she has been just a staunch supporter and the backbone, really. So I'm going to miss her, I'm definitely going to miss her. The Block Party in Bay Shore was, was very successful, and I'm really glad that we went to it. In fact, April and I are going to work more with Candace to look at the community calendars to get us out there. I think it's really helpful for parents to see, even though they're little ones, you know, it's good for them to see the high school district, and, you know, they have different questions and concerns, so I think it's reassuring when they see our faces in the community, and I want to be more visible that way. So it was fun having the parents come up, and even if the kids were only coming up for candy, you know, we still talked and it was...
Or pencils?
Or pencils, yeah. It was, if they said math or English was their favorite subject, that's right. I'm, so many of the same events, but I want to share something with you that hopefully you caught in social media, but this year and for the next couple of years, we've invested in building the capacity of our school counselors. And so, through Ms. Baca, we have training with a representative from a national group, the American School Counselor Association, and just like so many professions, there are standards for how this group operates. And it was really, I've gone to a couple of their meetings, and it's been really good to see they're all engaged, they're all asking questions, all the counselors want to do better by kids, that was really good. And I thought it was really helpful. Ms. Baca found a way that she could either give release time or compensate, because there's a lot of homework. You go home after your session and there's reading to do. And so the counselors are taking advantage of that, too. So when we're talking about our equity work, this is an important group of employees we don't want to overlook. Oftentimes, the counselors are overlooked, so I'm looking forward to the things they're going to come forward with. And I think I'll be briefed tonight because we have probably more inspiring presentations coming up. Thank you.
Ms. Casey, anything, AFT 1481?
Hi, good evening. I just have three things, well, two, really. So speaking of the students having financial aid nights to get ready for college, many of the staff have debt due to not having enough financial aid. So, AFT 1481 is putting on two student debt clinics. It is open to any staff who have debt, student debt. I know that there were some things in the news recently. I don't know that that will affect us, but it's Tuesday, November 19th, you'll see these signs around. Staff? And I have heard that it will even help if you're a parent of a student that has student debt. So November 19th and December 3rd, so we're having one in Oceana and one at Westmore, so that we have the, the two areas mainly. And also, next week, we normally have our, our union board meetings on the second Tuesday of the month, but next week, it's open to anybody, including students, and what we're doing is we're trying to do some training on ballot signature collecting for the Schools and Community First Initiative. So it's going to be at the Jefferson Library from 3:30 to 5:30, and our CFT rep, Ed Wang, will be there. And so that will be on November 11th, 12th?
Is that on his tour site?
It's, it's, it's 3:30 to 5:30. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's for the union, it's, it's our union, it's our normal union meeting, and so...
Okay, so you can talk about, yeah, okay, got it.
But I, you know what? I will check that, just to make sure, because there was never any question where, where it was going to be. It was going to be one of our sites, so...
Okay.
But I will check.
Yeah, I think, I think the rules are that in your union meeting, you can discuss things like this, but...
Great, thank you. All right. 12D, we've got Thornton High School ASB presentation coming up, Thornton.
Thank you for having us this evening. I just want to take a moment to introduce Chris Saw. One of the things we're focusing on in leadership right now is, you know, setting goals and stepping out of our comfort zone and really growing as individuals. You know, earlier in the week, students wrote down 30-day goals that they wanted to work on and focus on. One thing that Chris, Chris pointed out is how he wanted to step out of his comfort zone and get opportunities to really, really strive, and that's what brought us here today. You know, out of everyone in my classroom, he really stepped up to the plate and volunteered to come and do this. So, no further ado, I'd like to introduce Chris.
Hi, my name's Chris. And let me tell you about something, past events that we're going to do. We're working on, I mean, we did Welcome Back Barbecue, Soup Day, Community Cleanup, Pumpkin Decker, and Conscious. And the future events that we're going to do are Glide, Feed the, Feed the Needy, which is feeding the homeless, helping out the homeless, One Z, Hot Coke Day, Winter Day Events, Basketball Tournaments, Spring Barbecue, and Dodgeball Games. We also support our students with out-school tutoring, on-campus job listing, FLY, Each One, Each One, SSSquad, Kaiser, Permanent, Education Theater. Why is it important? It's important because you could have fun, hang out, and work together. Thank you. All right.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
What is FLY?
Oh, it's a program that you could go there, and it teaches you about laws and all this stuff.
So, Chris?
I would like, you didn't know you were going to see me again so soon, I'm so happy that you're here. I am very excited that you came and did the presentation. Thank you so much for stepping up and representing Thornton like you did. I hope that this isn't the last time we see you because I think your voice is an important voice, and I would love to hear more of your thoughts on what you think of Thornton, what we could do better, what would better serve you. So I hope we continue to hear from you, so don't make it. But if not, I'm going to be back at the school so we can chat at that time.
That's not easy to come for the board and...
Yeah. Absolutely.
Well done, thank you for sharing the stuff that's been going on at the school this year so far, so, well done.
Are there any programs that you're a part of at school that you're enjoying?
Part of FLY.
Okay, how are you liking it?
Do you have free food?
Well, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, there's not. Can't complain.
Best part.
I use free food to bribe people into doing things for me all the time.
All the time, all the time.
That's a good tool.
One of the trips that FLY helped coordinate was a trip to San Francisco Student University. So it was about 40 students that attended with teachers, and it was great to hear the feedback that students were giving us as to what it meant for them to experience that during the school day, and also how much the flexibility of the college program attracted students to get tickets.
Yeah, it was a great experience to take the whole entire school there, and a lot of students were walking away from that experience like, oh, how could I get on campus? Like, this is great, I had no idea that all this was available, so...
It's a go, Chris?
Yeah.
How was it for you?
It was fun, a lot of talking. It was fun, a lot of talking.
A lot of talking.
It's a lot of students.
Yeah.
And thanks to both of your teachers for coming in and supporting you tonight. I know it's a long night for you guys, so thank you so much for coming in, too. And of course, Mr. Mariko, always, it's a pleasure.
Are there any future field trips planned to, like, with FLY or with Thornton to other universities, other colleges, or with San Francisco State again?
Let's see, the, the next field trip, I believe, FLY has coordinated is a field trip where students participate in mock trials as well.
Nice.
So part of FLY's mission is to help students increase their leadership capacity, but also understand many of the rights that they're afforded in society, so that they can make more informed decisions. And part of that is to experience what it's like to, to take part in court proceedings.
How many folks are involved in mock trial at Thornton?
Well, the group is, how many, 15? Yes, somewhere between 12 and 15, but it's a group of students that they initially have that opportunity and then if there's others that are interested, then depending on FLY's capacity, then we can incorporate more.
So are you part of mock trial too, or are you part of mock trial as well?
Uh, uh, I'm a part of it.
That's you, man. You stepped up tonight. I know Thornton gets out, you know, a little later than they used to, but like, you're here at night, it's late, you know what I mean? So all the students here are props to you for doing that. But this is also good training in terms of like a public arena. I feel like the students at Thornton probably have an advance on that and understanding the ins and outs of the system, especially going to San Francisco State and seeing how that works. Like, a lot of people don't always think of themselves as going to college, but like, trips like that make you realize, like, yeah, I could do this and I could probably do this as good or better than somebody else, right? So I actually worked the mock trial team at the high school I'm at, and so I would encourage you to do that. Even let people know, like, if people watch crime dramas and those kind of things, those are the kind of things that we're not just always on one side of law or the other. The law is something that we are a part of and that's why all of us run for office and are a part of that, so, yeah.
Well, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your presentation, Chris. Great job and thank you, thank you staff. Alright, let's bring up Jefferson ASB.
Yeah.
Somebody's a little biased over there, okay?
Go Grizzlies!
Hello, I'm Krista May Estrada and I'm Jefferson's ASB Vice President of Outreach.
Hi, my name's Amanda Chuteech, I'm Vice, I'm ASB Vice President of Spirit.
And I am Gillian Flores, ASB Secretary.
So actually, on this first slide, we have a picture of the officers from 1927.
Nice.
Which we got by reaching out to them and having them send pictures of their yearbook.
Great.
The hair, though.
Okay, so the first day of school, we started, we decided to change things up by having an actual theme. And so our theme was making everybody feel like a VIP. And so basically, what we had is posters, so these right here are like quotes that we had around campus that were just meant to be a little bit cute and funny. And so the whole entire point of the VIP was to have stars for students and teachers. And so we made stars and we put on every teacher's doors and we had stars for students to put on lockers. And so basically, the concept was that you would get to, the teacher would get to feel special and also for freshmen or for newcomers, they get to see where the teachers are and it's easier for them to come by. So yeah, there's that. Okay, so for Club Rush, this is our first actual event that we have. And so basically, it's just meant for every club to come out, have a table and to recruit new people. And so right here, we have Poly Club and they're doing their dance. So we have 34 clubs that participated at our annual Club Rush in August of this year. It's the largest opportunity for groups and organizations on campus to present themselves, to, to show off, basically. Lots of signs and cheering and plenty of spirit was showed here. And then we also had 99.7 come over and just DJ for us. And so as you can see, next slide. So, and then, so again, for new clubs. So as we, as we can see, there's Gillian up there in Makers Club.
And so if you request, we have the Female Empowerment.
Also, we just got formed and there's a new club that's going to happen called Future Now. Female Empowerment and Future Now are both meant to empower students and to create equality and make students feel more, to give them a push into society as if they can do better, because everybody can do better. So we have, again, Makers Club, Grizzlies News Network, we have Tech Thursdays, we have the 2020 Census Truth and the Little Theater.
Makers Club is a fairly new club. We decided, me and the president of there, Jasmine Ricasa, decided that we wanted to further students' minds into the STEM field and wanted them to be able to release their creativity and make whatever they feel that they want to make. We have t-shirt presses, 3D printers, razor cutters, anything that they would think that they would want to make or would think that they would want to be like an entrepreneur, like a maker in the future. Similarly, we have Tech Thursdays, which is our-
Sort of newly formed coding club, to go into the STEM field again. And Grizzly News Network is our journalism club, which was just-
So right here, we have our homecoming. This is the three weeks and the LTA's that happen. And so basically, we have, on the top left, we have our two teachers that were doing Twin Day and the top right. On the bottom right, we have students who are doing Twin Day as well.
And yeah, and so basically, we had our first homecoming on Saturday, on a Saturday night, and it wasn't on a homecoming game night. So that meant that a lot of people, a lot of students came. And we had over 100 people that came to the dance, which was amazing. 300? And then also, there was Homecoming Rally and as you can see here on the bottom right, we have teachers that are doing tug-of-war. And so this rally was different than other homecoming rallies in the sense that we had a lot of staff participation. And also, we had not only class dances and ASB participating, but also other clubs such as Latino Heritage. Latino Heritage had their own dance going on and a lot of people were excited and had so much fun. And then also, to come back to homecoming dance, we had a photo booth and we had so much fun. And hopefully, we can do it again where we have homecoming on Saturday nights.
We also raffled off two tickets to Rolling Loud at our homecoming dance, yes.
Yeah, that really got students to want to come to the dance. Okay, now we have Foods Day, as John O'Campbell mentioned earlier. Foods Day, this is the first, this is the second year. Pretty sure that we implemented using the token system. So instead of students dealing with cash and change and all of that, we decided that in order to get the food that you would want, you would buy tokens, which is one for $1. And using the system helps dealing with change and money system easier here at JF. And yeah, and so clubs can come, participate and fundraise for their classes and be like different kinds of food that you would say, like soul food, rumpia and aguas frescas and other stuff like that. So it was a really fun day and all the clubs came out and we had fun and danced some music.
Okay, and so this was Spooky Week, so basically, in the last week of October, we had this called Spooky Week. And basically, we had LTA's happening during the whole entire week. And so on Halloween Day, we had a game show that was happening in Little Theater and we were just giving out prizes and, and a lot of people came to that, that was cool. And then conveniently, on Friday, it was November 1st, which is also Day of the Dead. And so we had Latino Heritage come and do their own LTA. And they also had an altar in the counseling center and I believe, yeah, in the counseling center. And so it was just a week to promote inclusivity with different type of cultures and to just have everybody come into that fall spirit.
Here are my pictures of students in their costumes and snap.
Well, we also had a door contest that happened and a lot of teachers really got into it. And in my actual fourth-year class, we had a lot of students who were so eager to do it. And it was just so fun to see all the doors being decorated and have so much spirit come on. So there's that.
That's a day you look the same.
Fall sports, our football, cross-country volleyball and cheer are doing actually pretty amazing this year. I mean, if you guys have ever been to one of the games, our team shows amazing sportsmanship and always cheers on everyone who plays, no matter if they're performing, say cheer, or they're having a game or meet for cross-country. It's really fun to go to the games, every stand, the students, the stands are filled with many students and everyone cheers on everyone. No one is frowning upon anyone. But whenever, whenever there's a game, it's all just really fun.
Okay, so Castle, it's the annual collaborative leadership conference at Westmore High School. This year, we only sent our freshmen and sophomores, because we wanted to give them more experience, learning some skills. Juniors and seniors obviously had a bit more. And the response was that they loved meeting other ASB members and developing those skills. Yes.
ASB and student staff, so these are a couple of pictures with our ASB students and our staff buddies. For the past couple of years, ASB students are assigned one or two staff members for the whole year, so they would be able to get to know them. I think recently, for Halloween, we made little staff buddy giddy bags. So we made like a little Halloween pun on a card and added some candy and delivered it to them and these are pictures from Halloween together. So the reason why we wanted to have every student and every staff have a buddy is because we gained a lot of staff members this year here at JF, a lot. And we want them to be able to feel included and be able to feel like they're community here at JF, because there are a lot of staff members that are too like nervous to like go outside, because they're, they're new and they don't really know as many other teachers, but we want them to feel comfortable. And that's what our ASB students are trying to be able to do, because, I mean, here at JF, we want to be a community and we want to have everyone get involved. Giving back. So recently, Makers Club did a fundraiser to support breast cancer research. As you can see, those shirts there were made with a donation of, a minimum donation of $20. You get a free shirt and all proceeds go to Susan-
G. Coman?
Yeah, Susan G. Coman for their breast cancer fundraiser. As well as what we have planned is we have a toy drive with the-
Together, yeah?
Together, sorry about that. And then we also have school-wide canned food drive and also campus beautifications.
So to continue with giving back, like John mentioned earlier, this- Saturday was the monthly food pantry. We served over 400 households slash families, and from our start in January, we have served almost 4,000 families. So yeah, really, it's a way to just give back to the community. So here's another- That we got from the alumni. It's a picture of the whole freshman class from 1927. And I'm happy to say that since then, our population has increased. So from our freshman year, personally in 2016, 2017 to now, our student population has increased about 300 students. With this increase, obviously, both the community and diversity of our school has increased as well. Continuing, so Grizzly Flex Time, this is our first year with Grizzly Flex Time and I would say it's gone extremely well. Both ourselves and other students have expressed how much they've enjoyed it and the 30 minutes really goes a long way. Personally, there was a project in our English class and I used it to meet up with my members and talk about it, yeah.
Yeah, it really helps everyone, every student who feels as if they're behind in their classes to really catch up with their teacher and catch up with anything they missed. So it really helps people get back on track, especially if, especially like for grades and all of that.
Yeah, and then this pro, this whole entire program is awesome for people who do sports or have jobs or have obligations after school, because most people that are not doing as well as they can be in schools mostly because of their out of school lives. So it's amazing that we have this.
So our climate committee, last March, Jefferson established its first student climate committee. Students and staff of different grades and backgrounds meet every collab day at lunch and fourth or fifth period to discuss campus issues with admin. It explores thoughts and feelings connected to social issues at school to find solutions.
College and career prep, our amazing college and career counseling department has been actively prepping students for their life after high school. So recently, we had a cram jam session last week for three days, Monday through Wednesday, and that really helped students who are applying for colleges really have time, like kind of one-on-one with their academic counselors to be able to help with their FASA or college applications or PIQs and all of that. And we also have a cash for college tonight, as John mentioned earlier, for students and families. In order to get help with their FASA, we're also raffling off a Chromebook for anyone who goes tonight. And, um, yeah.
Last month, Jefferson hosted a college and career readiness week, which includes special information sessions about the CSU, UC and private school systems, as well as fun raffles and students also attend the PSAT or SAT that one day as well.
Thank you.
It's all the pictures from Halloween.
There's my daughter.
I figured, yeah, I figured you dressed like that every day. Look at that spirit, yeah.
Alright, let's, I'll stay, stay. Students, anything, questions, comments, go for it.
I was just wondering, the Flex Time seems really good, because at least for me personally, I'm very busy with marching band and sports. So I was just wondering how that got implemented in your school?
I mean, it was mostly from students. Students asked for this in the climate committee. And so it's just that I, I believe that our staff and administration just heard us and they were trying to find ways to help us and they found teachmore.org. And I feel like, and I think they also just signed up with it and that's how we got onto it.
Cool, so then do, do the rest of the classes just like shrink?
So the way that it works for our campus is that like, so you have, you use your school ID and your school password for it and then you would sign up and have appointments. And if you didn't have appointment or if a teacher didn't schedule you for it, because let's say that if you were failing a class, then you would have to go to that class and talk with your teacher and make up for it. But if you had no appointments or no place, like, you don't have to go anywhere, you can pick any class you go to that, that's in your schedule, like, you have the teacher, then you can go to their class. And then it's like a 30 caps, 30 student cap, so when that class is full, you have, would have to look for another one.
To answer the shortened question, every period is shortened by five minutes and then since we have six periods, that accumulates into the 30-minute period that we have for Flex Time. Yes.
I have a question about the 2020 Census Club. I was wondering if you go into specifics for what that club entails and what that really does, if you know anything about it.
It's actually not a club per se, it's, I just see a group and the school is just in charge, so.
Okay, okay.
They want to train everybody on how to fill out the census, families, communities, because that depends on our funding, so.
Okay.
Their, their goal is to get out, get the word out in this next year.
Alright, thank you. Got it.
So, great presentation, my goodness. You even had enrollment, you had, how did you get, who did you go to to get the pictures of the classes?
Yeah, we contacted alumni.
Oh, is that Ms. Rasmussen?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably. So it, it-
She's my fourth-year teacher.
It's actually like, I Facebook stalked alumni group.
What, what's that?
I Facebook stalked like 30 different alumni groups and tried to get them to be involved.
Okay. Okay.
And they started posting, um, lots of curveup stuff, and then one of them scanned their whole year by consent.
Oh, okay.
On that one, which was really cool, cause they were called the Spirit, not the Indian.
Yeah, was that, was that the first graduating class? I can't remember. I think twenty-five was. I think twenty-five was because I actually interviewed someone who was, uh, the first graduating class. Cause my sister-in-law, her entire family in Daly City went to Jeff. And her uncle was one of the first, uh, he was part of the first graduating class.
Yeah, it'd be cool, so she scanned it all in, it sent it to me, I was like. There's tons of other ones now, so like, I'm gonna get sixty and seventy, it's like really funny.
Oh, great.
We even had the graduating class of seventy-nine come out at halftime on the footlong.
Wow, seventy-nine. Yeah, so, um, my daughter is a sophomore, she's an ASB, Carly, and she does love flex time. And she uses it for group, um, projects to get caught up on, uh, things, cause she has a lot of stuff she's doing after school. So, and she said that all her friends love it, so I'm really glad about that. Um, and then Jillian, were you the one who designed the, the Jefferson Carriage shirts?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
That's the president right there for.
Okay. Yeah, so they're great. I'm a breast cancer survivor, so, um, Andy and I bought, uh, we donated to get shirts. So, thank you for that. Yeah, it's wonderful. And God, you're doing a lot of stuff. I didn't realize that, um.
Always keeping busy.
Yeah, always keeping busy. And, uh, thank you for representing Jefferson so well.
For having me.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Yeah, great presentation. Um, it was good to see the school spirit. It's interesting, our mascot was called the Spirit, but that was, that's a cool mascot. Grizzlies is, I'm glad that.
I know, I saw the picture of it, it just says the words in all the yearbooks.
Yeah.
Maybe a spirit doesn't have a picture, maybe it's just the spirit. Keeping the spirit alive. But I mean, um, with the food pantry, I was really good to see that, cause I know that our city does that and, um, that our high school students are involved with that means a lot. Um, just if you think back to even nineteen twenties, I guess a couple of years later, the stock market crashed, right? So there were always ups and downs, Daly City, those are some of the first teenagers in a high school in our city. Cause this city was established about fifteen, sixteen years before that. So, um, putting things in perspective, that's nice to see that. Uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear flex time is going well. I know we heard that at the side meeting. Also that, uh, I just noticed to fill out your FAFSA or Dream Act, um, is really important. I'm glad that was on the flyer. Um, so many of our students, I feel like, even if it doesn't, if people don't feel it directly affects them, it does indirectly, at the very least, because we have friends and other family who could benefit and will, and should benefit, um, from what we have, at least on national level. And so, um, glad that happened tonight, just wrapping up right now, I guess, and, um, hopefully more of that. Um, and I'm glad there's a twenty twenty census club. That's new. I've never heard of a high school doing work on the census. But, um, as people are able to register vote earlier, right, in advance, um, these are the kind of things that we should be doing. And I can't think of a better organization to do that than student government, like having mock trial, you know? Do we have mock trial at Jeff or?
Yes.
Good, that's good. Um, so yeah, keep up the good work and, um, the grizzly spirit, yeah.
Yes, thank you for the great presentation. Um, I need one of those, um, hoodies, so make me one when you get here. Just saying, but I love the presentation. Thank you for being so inclusive, um, in your community and always giving back. I always appreciate that very much. And you're not only thinking about your peers, but also the teachers as well, which is really nice to hear. So thank you for that. And I look forward to all the wonderful other things that you will be doing the rest of the school year. And I will be coming for a school visit very soon as well, so. Thank you, ladies.
So first, I wanna thank your teacher who looks, does like she doesn't feel well. Grateful that you still made it out here today, so thank you so much and I hope you feel better. Um, and then I, I know all of you guys too, it's nice. I'm like all the students that are coming today, I've had experience with, um. You two, I feel like I see you all the time, cause I watched Mission Fusion last year a lot. Cause I bought the video and, and last year I thought was phenomenal. So, and when you performed at the Sam Taylor County School of Television, people still talk about that, so, thank you very much. And then you, Longity, are a fantastic presenter. I sat through your speech in your class. And, um, so I knew, I was like, oh, she's, she's destined for great things, so, um, the presentation tonight was fantastic. I really feel like, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, if you guys could videotape yourselves doing it, because that is a, and that would help, because that is a commercial, like that, we could just show that video.
For open enrollment.
Right. I mean, to me, that, that just was fully encompassed, everything at the school, was very student-focused and student-based. And after seeing that, you know, I would want to send my student.
So open house is on the fourteenth.
Right, I don't, no, no rush, no pressure, like, it doesn't have, because this, it, it.
It is really.
This would hold, like I think, you know, um, but this is the kind of thing that drives people to say, this is where I wanna send my student. I mean, it was a fantastic presentation, so thank you guys all very much for the work that you did on it.
Yeah, that was a really great presentation and especially, and the fact you had to throwback to nineteen twenty-seven. You know, and especially, you know, knowing that the hundredth anniversary is coming up, you know, soon, which is pretty exciting. You know, and just on a side note, um, actually, my brother-in-law is, is the editor of Cal High Sports. And last year, he actually sent over to me the history of the matchup, football matchups between Jefferson and South San Francisco. And, uh, and I know that Jeff destroyed South City this year. But it's interesting because the very first, just from a history perspective, the very first football game that Jeff played was against South City in nineteen twenty-four, and they lost fifty-nothing, which, you know. But, but it's, but the, but the whole history behind it is, is, is pretty cruel, so.
Why'd you have to say that?
They came back around and destroyed them forty-one nothing this year. So it's, so it's all part of it, that's all. No, but, but I, I, I think what's great is that your presentation showed the rich history of your school as well and what, and what you're about today, and that was really fantastic. So continue to keep up the good work and the excitement that you have and the fresh ideas you're bringing to it. And I am blown away that you have served four thousand families with the pantry. So, Trudeau's to you and the Jefferson community, Mr. Bashir's, you know, I mean, really fantastic job.
It's, I, I just really, I'm always impressed by the social justice that's, that Jefferson takes. Like it's very involved in the community. And this is the whole purpose, is that we're trying to create good citizens. And so that, you know, you do that and you model that in a safe space so that you're confident when you move forward. So I'm glad that there's so many different opportunities to model good citizenship for only leave you. I'm very excited about the world that has the Jefferson Grizzlies going out into it, so thank you again so much.
Anything to add?
Oh, just well done. I, and hats off to our ASB director over there, um, and to the principal. I agree, I'm not gonna repeat everything, but really, there's a place for every student at that school. And it's so important connecting every student to those kinds of activities. You don't know what it is that's gonna interest a student and keep them engaged in the school day as well. So I, I love that, thank you for that.
And before we depart, I do wanna say thank you so much also for taking the lead and welcoming the new staff. That's really, really such a powerful thing that you guys have done. And, and to create that sense of family with, uh, with the new staff, so thank you so much for doing that. Thank you so much, everybody.
All right.
Don't feel like you have to stay.
Yeah, we're pausing so you guys could just, you know, yeah, yeah. We won't feel offended.
Thank you. Awesome job. Congratulations, Amanda. Hi, ladies. Bye.
All right, moving on to consent. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item thirteen?
Some of them.
Thank you.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item fourteen, public comment, do we have any blue cards this evening? Are you sure? Can you check, please? Okay, all right. Moving on, item fifteen A one, ethnic studies update, Ms. Baca.
Evening, President Lee, good evening, members of the board tonight. I will be briefly talking about, um, the ethnic studies update and where we are as a district. And again, um, that is the purpose of tonight's presentation. So, um, just quickly, why ethnic studies? Um, studies show that it helps students develop strong sense of identity. It provides students with skills and language to critically analyze, respond, and speak out on social issues. It strengthens social and cultural awareness and helps foster a classroom environment of trust between students and teachers, enabling them to discuss contentious issues and topics as well as current events. So, um, what is ethnic studies? It is an interdisciplinary study of race, ethnicity, and indigeneity with an emphasis of, um, on experiences of people of color in the United States. Um, so there was a proposal, AB three, three-three-one, which would add a semester-long high school course in ethnic studies and make it a graduation requirement. Um, starting the, um, during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Um, but there had been a lot of concerns, so they had developed, um, a curriculum already and it had gone through many reviews and comments. And based on the comments of some groups, that, um, some people feel that there was, um, lack of teaching about antisemitism. Um, some of the groups felt that they were not represented enough, so for instance, the Armenians, Greeks, Hindus, and Koreans. And because of that, um, and also just to let you know, like, the focus of the current, um, draft is on Latinos, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, and indigenous people. So when the other group basically was saying that, you know, you're not representing us enough, the other core group is saying, well, if you add this curriculum, like the other groups, then it will water down the curriculum. So there had been a debate back and forth on, um, that there needs to be a revision on this curriculum. Um, so very recently, I believe it's in September of this year, um, the CDE, State Board of Education, decided to delay and that they need to continue to revise and improve the model curriculum draft. Um, and they will continue that. Um, so what are we doing at JUHSD? Um, as you know, we have not implemented this as a graduation requirement. Um, because we are really waiting for what the state guidance will be, because we don't want to put something in place and then all of a sudden change it based on the state's, um, requirements or expectations. However, we have, um, touched some on, on this topic already, so especially at Oceana High School. Um, their whole humanities curriculum, um, is based on ethnic studies. They also have a class called Race and Membership in American History. Um, the English department is also, um, in the process of adopting culturally relevant novels for Jefferson, Terranova, Thornton, and Westmore. And in fact, this Thursday, they will be meeting under the leadership of, um, Ms. Robinson and, um, Ms. Rubin. They'll meeting, be meeting with a group of English teachers to review, um, five novels and look at it through the lens of, um, cultural relevancy. Um, and what they're planning to do also is, the current adopted novels is to look at, um, those novels and review them to, through that lens. Um, we've also explored some dual enrollment courses through Skyline College this year. Um, we did put these classes on our, um, course selection sheet. However, the signup was not, um, high enough for a class to be a go. However, we will try this again for, um, the following school year. And also, there is an integration of, um, these topics in social science courses. Um, some of the potential barriers are, um, budgetary constraints, um, lack of instructional resources and support. And again, you know, just time, because we only have six periods in a day, so we would really need to, you know, figure out a structure um, when this becomes a requirement. And right now, again, just as sta- as a standalone course, there had been, um, lack of interest just right now with Skyline's dual enrollment class. Um, so some of the next step is, um, we need to explore some various models of the implementation. Continue with adoption of culturally responsive novels in English Language Arts. Um, perhaps convene a committee to analyze the current situations and potential solutions. Um, embed some of these lessons in u- and units in our current, um, scoping sequence. And partner, continue to partner with Skyline College to offer perhaps, you know, some, um, ethnic studies classes. Some of the courses that were, um, placed on the course selection sheet, I believe there was, um, Women's Studies, um, history of, um, African-Americans, um, some art classes, that is Asian art, I believe. Um, but again, the signup had been low this year, so we will try to push this, um, and advertise it more for the following school year. Um, but that is it.
For comments, questions?
This is the next agenda item.
Well, sorry, I did ask for it. Does anybody have any?
I just have one comment. As, it would be hard to implement as a class, I agree. Could it, is like, is it possible to implement into studying like world history? Because there's so many like different groups that felt they weren't represented, or is kind of like comprehensive?
It is something that we are exploring, we're also going to adopt a new, um, world history curriculum. So when we adopt a curriculum, we have to make sure that we're looking at this through, um, this lens.
Are there textbooks like that yet?
Um, there are some, um, but I, you know, we have to look at, again, if the representation may be, you know, not as reflective of our population, because I would assume, you know, that's what I would like to see is that, you know, our text reflects who we are as a district. And it may look, you know, a little different, you know, down south or wherever it is, so we may also have to supplement, um, those materials.
I mean, is there really a way to incorporate everything in ethnic studies into a semester? Like without it spilling over to other, you know, cause there's so much to cover, how can you really?
And I, I really think, you know, embedding this in what, everything that we are doing, it's very, very critical. Um, and so we have to, you know, wait what the state wants. If, you know, we can just embed it throughout all of our classes, English classes, history classes, um, because it fits right in with everything that we do.
Right.
Um, so for instance, when we, um, looked at our biology textbook, we also had to make sure that, you know, some of the pictures and the representation is not all, you know, Eurocentric and. Um, so we are looking at that and embed it throughout.
Oh, I was, uh, wondering for the, uh, English Language Arts books, the cul- the, uh, yeah, the, uh, culture responsive, uh, yeah, novels, would they be already added into the English curriculum, if they were added in, or would this be for its own semester?
It would be not for this year, but it would be added in, the board will adopt it. And then it will be part of the scoping sequence as one of their, um, novels to use.
So I, I don't wanna teach ethnic studies. I mean, I feel like I don't want my, the study of me othered, right? I don't wanna have to walk into a special class to learn about me. So, um, and I feel like I wanna get away from the ethnic studies model. There's lots of people that aren't represented. If you are a part of the LGBTQI rep- you know, nothing happened to, with those folks before you were born. You know, like you don't learn about yourself at all, any of the books that you read, any of the history that we have. So, I would just like us to be a school that teaches real history, that has full inclusion, that has our students reflected back at them anytime they walk into a classroom.
Right.
And that you don't have to go off campus to Skyline or be in a special class for a semester to get, you know, one, a couple of days of yourself before we go back into this very Eurocentric, uh, you know, education that we are forcing all of our kids to go through. Um, and so, that's one of the reasons why I'm hoping that the work that is being done through the Equity Committee and that task force, that we can use that committee to help us, help guide us on different strategies that we can use. Because, you know, we can't wait for textbooks, you know, we can't, you know, the textbooks are probably not coming because this is not a motivating factor for enough Americans, enough districts to get them to create a textbook. So what can we do, as you were talking about supplementally, to use current textbooks, but to also, you know, adopt? And then, the other thing is that, you know, the books that are in the library, like, there's other things that we can do that are, to have a, a set of texts. vision, things that you can see, things that you read that are more reflective of the people that are around us. So I'm glad that we're starting with the English Language Arts, but I think also, you know, when I look in all the school libraries, there is a section, there is, you know, that has ethnic groups in it. Then during all the history months, there's a thing that's put up during that history month where they pull all those books out, put them in a special section, and they put them back. I mean, you should, again, there shouldn't be so few books that you can pull all of them out and put them in a special. Like, it shouldn't be within the library. So looking at these type of things, this is the kind of thing. I don't want to invest heavily into something that I feel is not going to be beneficial and really put, you know, disrupting historic systemic racism and bias. Like, I feel like the way we do that is to have a curriculum that's fully involved. And Oceana is a perfect model for this. They do that at that school. And so I think that, you know, we don't have to, you know, recreate the will. We can look at what's been doing at that school and build upon it. So that's where I am.
And again, how can you fit all of that into one semester without really?
Well, you can.
Let's just check the box and we're done with it.
Ms. Bak, does it say it has to be a standalone course?
Um, the different models, right now, they're just presenting different models. So I don't, you know, there was no directive just yet that it's going to be a standalone course. But I know that the proposal for A B three, three, one is that, you know, a semester of ethnic studies, but they didn't really say, like, you know, can we embed it? So for instance, you know, some of the districts embed health throughout their other curriculum. So I don't know if they will allow us to do, you know, the same thing for ethnic studies as well.
And oftentimes, there's a waiver process. So if we have a better way.
And there's so much data that shows this is the better way to do it.
I agree.
Exactly, and it's about, and it's about changing, changing mindsets that the work that we are already doing and the equity work, you know, network. Fact that there's still a really long way to go, quite frankly, when it comes to, comes to the mindset shifts that we all need to make. You know, I mean, the fact that every session I go to, even though I've been through some of this a fair bit already, there's always something new I'm learning because of something somebody is sharing about him or herself that I missed. And you can't do that in a semester-long course. And the fact that, you know, here we did offer it as a dual enrollment course, and it basically, you got crickets, is really what it comes down to. I mean, that already speaks to the fact that there's a larger issue at play that can't be fixed by just a dual enrollment course or, or a single semester course.
Like, as we were talking about this, I was just thinking about my A P Literature class that we, specifically that teacher makes a really big point about teaching us material that isn't just specific to, like, the syntax of the English language, that we're reading a book where we're learning about apartheid right now, and we're doing a whole giant research paper about it. So like, she really makes a point to incorporate all these different kind of historical aspects into the class. And I just think that that's a really good way to do it, that at least personally for me, like, the most effective way for me to learn about things that are happening with people is through reading these firsthand books that, like, these firsthand accounts of these really powerful authors and their experiences. I feel like that's the best way that we can learn about these things, and that we don't necessarily need a history textbook, you know? That honestly, I feel like that's not as effective as reading someone's actual story. Because really, that's what, that's what makes history interesting. It's like the people's story, not just like what country won what battles. That, you know, I think that's been a really good way for me at least to learn. And I feel like if we were able to incorporate that into our English classes, that, you know, we can use those novels to teach people how to write argumentative essays and stuff, but then also have them learning about issues like mental health and, you know, all of the stigmas against different people of different identities. But I think that that would be a really effective way to do it.
We need you to speak at the State Board of Education.
And like, I do really agree with what Ms. Al Houdin was saying before about the kind of having people be an other, that having, I feel like having a specific class that would kind of further the point of, like, having people be other. That it's, I don't know, I just feel like people would feel awkward about, about having this whole separate class just to talk about themselves. But it's like, I feel like everyone should be weighted equally, you know? That like, it should be equally distributed throughout the classes of everyone learning about each other. That it shouldn't just be, oh, here's these other people that we have to specifically designate a class to learn about. That I, I just want to have a curriculum where everyone is kind of like united and like, hey, let's learn about all these people and their, you know, how they work and all these different people. And just to kind of be more united. Because I feel like especially right now, like, at least in the United States, I feel like everyone's kind of really separated. And I, I hate that. Like, I want everyone to be able to come together. So I feel like having that curriculum is going to be a really important part of that, especially like for school culture too, for bringing the students together to like, understand each other.
Four years, not just for one semester. And then more when they're going. Going over World War Two, and Mr. Sands asked if my father, who is a death march survivor, could speak to the class. And he has, you know, spoken at so many conferences. And he was a veteran's advocate for Philippine Scouts. And, and I asked him, I said, really? The school down the street? I said, yeah, okay.
So one of the things that I just wanted to acknowledge is that I'm glad that we're updating this. I'm glad that, you know, we're taking the time to discuss ethnic studies and that ethnic studies is really misunderstood. I just ask a quick question. Is any, how many people in the room have actually ever taken a class in ethnic studies? Please raise your hand.
Two of my sisters teach it, so yes.
I have a degree in ethnic. I took, I took a course about myself, Asian American Studies, and two Native American Studies courses, so.
Hold on. I actually happen to get a degree in it, right? So my degree, though, wasn't through ethnic studies, because there was no major for mixed ethnic studies. And being somebody who's mixed race, I wanted to take classes in all those areas to fully understand the things I didn't necessarily understand. Because even though I am mixed, I'm not mixed with everything, and I need to learn beyond myself. And being raised in this community, a lot of things we're saying here is ethnic studies. We're talking about civil and human rights in South Africa, right? We're covering that unit in our world history class as well. And so in A P classes, one of the only classes I learned in high school about some of my native roots in learning that was through my A P U S History course. So I fully recognize that we could and should, and the movement for ethnic studies was to achieve this conversation, right? So this conversation, to me, I hear a lot of reasons in terms of why and how we should brand ethnic studies, which is actually the forefront of where ethnic studies is going in higher education, where it was started, coming out of the civil and human rights movements that we've pushed over the course of the twentieth century and before and after that, right? And so when I think about this, and one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up is because other districts may be pursuing ethnic studies on a more, with more fortitude, or perhaps with more intention. But I feel like this is not just my soapbox, but this is something we should really be considering with a lot more gravity when we talk about equity. This is, ethnic studies was a conversation about equity before we called it equity, right? We discussed this fifteen, twenty years ago when I was in college, right? So we're talking about a lot of the trainings we have for adults, right, in our schools. Equity trainings are essentially ethnic studies classes built into interactive discussions, which is great. Because we can call it what we want to, we can call it history class, we can call it, you know, ethnic studies. But the fact remains that we need more of this guidance in our curriculum. And I think without it, our standards, our common core standards in California as a state are more progressive than other states because we are more diverse, because we do incorporate a lot more perspectives. And I have heard the argument that L G B T Q is not part of ethnic studies. That is bogus. That is completely false.
I didn't say, I didn't say that.
I know, I'm just saying is, is I've heard that in the narratives that that comes with often those that seek to distance or separate. There's actually an article just, I think, today or a few days ago where there are other universities kind of putting that out there to kind of divide faculty at the college.
But it's, it's not part of the California curriculum though, right? So the ethnic studies curriculum that's going to come from the C D E, L G B T Q I history is not part of it. So that's what I'm talking about. You're talking about collegiate-level ethnic studies, which is a completely different animal than what we're going to be doing at high school level and what's coming from the C D E. So that's why I'm saying. No, I'm not, because, you know, I sat, I've listened to all of the hearings on it, and I've been involved in it deeply with the C D E through C S B A. So I, I think I do know what I'm talking about here. And that's why, you know, I fought for ethnic studies to be pushed through because I feel like without it being coming from the state, most high schools won't even have the conversation. But what I'm saying is, what I think the C D E is going to push through is bare minimum, and I don't want to do that. I want to do something that's more expansive than just one course, one semester. And I would also push back on you a little bit about how seriously we're taking it. I would challenge you first to be a part of the equity network that's happening in this district and to go to one of those meetings, which you have not done yet.
There were like two, I think.
Well, there's been four.
Right.
But.
That's okay.
No, but I'm just saying.
Actually, actually, it's not.
Just so I can finish my point.
No, no, no. As we're discussing, let's just be clear on what.
Just so I can finish my point, is that you made an allegation that we're not taking this as seriously as we should. Well, you said that, you said that. So I'm just saying.
I think we should be taking it with all the gravity it should be taken.
Okay, but I'm saying before you can make that statement, I think you should be a part of that meeting and go to those meetings before you can make a statement like that. That's all, and I'm telling.
Well, see, I don't disagree with the work being done. Obviously, I've been a part of that.
You have not, you have not been in.
Since I was in college.
Okay, but I'm talking about the work that's being done here in the district.
That's, that's great, and I'm, I'm glad to see, it's one of the reasons why I want to bring this conversation up because this conversation started with the things that we are doing, which I appreciate, because this is the main point, right? What are we doing? This is an update, right? This is not a mandate. The state's going to do something eventually. It took about twenty years to get it in San Francisco with movement. We have professors from San Francisco State who've been pushing that as well, right? Who've been able to expand that. We have family involved in this, obviously, right? So for me, as a college student, I always felt like, why don't we have this in our community? Well, we do. We have it in our history classes, we have it in our English classes. But the only reason we have it in those classes is because of ethnic studies. So we don't necessarily have to have a class called ethnic studies. I would hesitate to say we don't need ethnic studies, because that was a conversation that started with in the beginning of the meeting. And as it goes there, I mean, those are the kind of things I think dial back where we are and how we can push forward as an extremely diverse community.
I think you're misinterpreting, I think you're misinterpreting what I said.
Let me finish what I'm saying, so I can get to the point. So my point being is this, the C D E is going to set a minimum, you're right. It's never going to be enough. I was actually at the College of Ethnic Studies meeting at San Francisco State recently, and we're discussing that point exactly. And to point is, the university, especially the C S U, has a huge role to play in shaping that curriculum. But there are no credential programs that mandate ethnic studies as a requirement. There are cultural competency courses. As a teacher, I know this because I've been through those courses. Cultural relevance is a part of it. Everybody here with a credential knows that. We didn't get B clad, which is bilingual education, until we had a movement to push for bilingual education for those who are coming from communities that speak more than one language. So when we have those kind of things built into our English and history courses, those are amazing opportunities. It doesn't change the fact that without pursuing some of these options, at least to do an enrollment and then promoting them, that's the challenge at the colleges as well. A lot of this under enrollment in ethnic studies at the colleges. So the question that I am posing, and I would ask, and we just want to bring this update, are all the reasons why this discussion is serious. And I don't think the C D E is going to be able to lead on this because it's a district initiative, right? It's a statewide initiative, but it's also a national movement. So how we're going to incorporate these, we should be looking to those departments and colleges. I think Skyline is a great partner. I would add that we're right here in the Bay Area next to San Francisco State, which is actually a close university, and the leader, if not the leader in our state, to kind of push forward this conversation and in line with our equity work. Whether or not I've been to a meeting at equity work is one thing. Of course, I'm on board with that. And I've been doing this work since before I was even on a board, right? So what I bring, what I'm bringing to the table is this discussion and to further it, not to say, let's wait for the state to do something, because when they do something, it will be a minimum. And I would ask that we get ahead of it in the ways that we have been doing. So everything that we're doing here, and I think next steps is a good way to just kind of pivot, because I don't think it's an argument between people. We all feel different about ethnic studies, about whether we value it on certain levels and in certain ways it should be channeled. I majored in it because I majored in a lot of things. It's interdisciplinary major. Our students are getting an interdisciplinary education in our classes, and so I think the goal is to weave it into all of our curriculum. So teachers have that training, but it won't stop.
And I, and I think that was said multiple times during this, during this discussion. And, and the other, and, and the reality is, we've been speaking about equity, at least in this district, really, really on a more concerted effort over this past year. And certain, you know, over the year when, when Ms. Al Houdin and I were doing the equity work through C S B A, and of course, all the, all the work we've actually done in the past two, three months, that you have missed. So you, so contextually. Nate, let me finish my point. You asked, you asked.
Go ahead.
Contextually, you actually are not aware of what the work we're doing here, because you haven't been in the meetings where we've actually discussed it. That's, that's really the issue that I have, is that I, I understand where you're coming from, but it's actually understanding why we are doing it, where we are right now. The staff who are doing the work with us, which includes several people in this room right now, it's about the mindset change. It's, it's about creating a culture where it's embedded in all we do. It's about the fact that when we are given curriculum to look at, to approve as a board, that we're looking at it through an equity lens, that we're, that it is about what Khalima has said, what Ms. Cole has said about the way that the instruction is embedded into the, into what's there, and what we're doing at Oceana. That's what it's about. So, so for, for me personally to say, no, we don't need an ethnic studies course, it's because it becomes another item to check off. And it's not about embedding the equity lens into our existing culture, which we don't have right now, only in pockets.
Well, I agree with a lot of what you said. I would say that, one, I would ask people to respect in this room people's opinions, the perspectives. As part of ethnic studies, understand everybody's opinion and perspective. Two, my presence at a meeting for equity has almost nothing to do with the legitimacy of what people are pushing on a state and national level. I would not, I would not take that stance.
That's not why we're saying it.
No, but there's a point that is being said, and I think it's diminishing what we're addressing today, because this is my item on the agenda. I appreciate that.
We were responding to your diminishment of how we feel about the topic.
Most people here are in agreement that we don't want ethnic studies class.
Because we want to incorporate it within the whole curriculum, not just one class. So we want to bring the relevancy in every single class, not just one specific class, and say, well, we can fit everything into one semester, and we cannot. So it's like, that's why, you know, it sounds like, well, we, we should be learning about it in biology. We should be learning it. It's, it's the relevancy and the correlation that they have with the classes that they're taking and how they can apply it with, like, the knowledge that they're learning. So they can say, okay, I, I can identify with that, and it relates to me. Not just, oh, we're going to learn about what happened in the Revolutionary War, or, you know, like, how does that apply? So, so it's like the, so they're trying to say that there's going to be a better way of applying ethnic studies, if you want to say that. So that's what they're saying. And then, and us taking the classes is helping us apply all those things, you know, equitably in all the classes, not just saying, we're going to throw all these little lessons into one little class and try to make sure everybody, all the students understand. And then you're going to say it's going to be required that they take this class, when Karine said that they offered the class and there was very low enrollment. So it already is an option and nobody is taking it. So, so that's the dispute here, you know? That's what they're trying to say.
No, and I acknowledge, I, I'm thinking for clarifying those. I, I did point those out as well, and I, I would like to say that it's more, just to say this, I would highly encourage, I would say for the next update, maybe we can revisit this towards the end of the year, because legislation is moving Sacramento, not because they're crazy, not because universities don't know that ethnic studies is somehow not important at the higher education level. We see all these school shootings. We see all this violence in our country. We see a lot of things in our country that requires the equity lens we're talking about. So there's a reason why this is moving, and I get it on the local level. I'm not trying to take away from the points people are making.
But, 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 but here, right here, we need to focus on it on the local level. Dr. Laurie, do you want to add something?
I do. I, I, I think one of my concerns about, I've seen this from experience, when you have ethnic studies as a standalone course, there's no guarantee that you've changed the minds of or practices of the teachers teaching the rest of the subjects. When you start to put that curriculum in the hands of teachers who sit down and plan, that's where you're going to see huge growth. And, you know, I understand that the, the state's trying to check things off, but I think we can do a better job.
Absolutely. Like, modeling what's been done in Arizona, modeling what's been trying, what they're trying to do in San Francisco, a much broader program. I don't understand the pushback, because I feel like we're trying to expand on your idea and do it in a way. I don't understand the pushback because I feel like we're trying to expand on your idea and do it in a way that's much more meaningful and impactful for students and the community at large. So I, I'm, I'm not understanding the pushback to be quite.
There is no pushback. All I'm doing is raising a question, right?
Can we just, can we wrap this convo up then? Are we all in agreement?
Let, I, I'd like to just respect the fact that I didn't come here to make an argument. I feel like a lot, there's a lot of antagonism. There's a lot, I spoke last to just bring up the issue. Thank you for the, the presentation. I think the input that we're talking about, and this, I don't wanna, this is late. We're here on a Tuesday night in November. It's election day in the city. There are things happening, right? This is to understand what's going on beyond our district and to understand what we're doing in our district as a part of a larger thing, not just because we're channeling it and we're doing it perfectly. I would also ask that, I'm not an expert on Ethnic Studies, but I do have a, a, a degree in Ethnic Studies and an advanced degree in social science. So I'm not just making these things up. I'm not here to proselytize. I'm not here to tell you what you should know, or you should know, or anybody should think of. I personally think Ethnic Studies can be marketed better. I think it can be done at, better at the college level. I don't think it's just about Ethnic Studies. Obviously, it's about changing the way we think. The whole movement around a lot of this was to understand the worldview of multiple perspectives around the world, and I think we're doing that. What I do wanna ask is that our district takes seriously and consult experts in Ethnic Studies, people with PhDs, people who work for those departments, people in universities that have leadership in the Bay Area that can actually provide us more focus, because I don't think Sacramento's gonna have it. And I will contend that the work that we're doing is great, but it's not complete and it's missing a component, and this can inform it in ways no other department can do. I, I believe that fully with my heart. And it's not just because I'm a cheerleader for one thing, it's because I do believe in all these things because I've seen it and I've been a part of it enough to know as a teacher, what I see missing in my colleagues' training, what I see missing in police officers' training, what I see missing in healthcare, and all the things in other industries that we exist in, right? So those are the reasons why I bring it up and I want it to be taken seriously. And I would like, just to ask not to dismiss, Ethnic Studies as a course is not effective. I totally disagree with that. One course can change somebody's life in many ways. And equity training can do the same thing in a weekend, right? So if we can believe we can do this in different ways with our students in, in high schools because we grew up learning these things, even in our experiences, why don't we believe we can do that with more options, right?
All right. Thank, thank you, Ms. Archibody. All right, moving on to, um.
Say one thing. You have this passion that would be really helpful if you came to our Equity Task Force.
I'm already trying to be, the next one is, is scheduled, so I, I totally, yes, no, it's, it's understandable. Yeah, but I mean, I, I would like to ask to think about this in real lands, like, I would like to say this. It's not just my item. This is our item. This is one of our tasks.
We, 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 we completely, we hear you. We, we, we understand. That's why we've been doing this work. All right, we'll move on to item fifteen A two. CASP results, Ms. Baca.
President Lee, good evening, members of the board. Tonight, I will be presenting the results of the twenty nineteen, um, California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. And I just wanna let you know that, um, it is our current seniors who took this assessment last spring. And this is the fifth administration, um, of the assessment. Again, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide information specifically on the Smarter Balanced Semitive Assessment Scores and to review the five-year score trend, um, for student groups as well. Just as a reminder, the purpose of the CASP assessment is to, um, it is designed to improve teaching and learning. It provides information about students' learning in the year that the test is taken, so that would be last year, and identifies areas of support students may need in the following year. And it measures students' learning of the standards, grade level expectation in each tested subject. And as you know, only our eleventh grade students, um, took this assessment. And again, as a reminder, CASP system is an assessment system. It's like an umbrella with many different parts. So there is the California Science Test, which our students took last year, but the information or the data will not be available until January of twenty twenty. There's also the Spanish Reading and Language Arts, which is an optional exam that our students did not take. And there are additional resources, including the interim assessments and some, um, digital library, um, formative assessment process where it is a website with lesson plans and some, um, assessments as well. But tonight, I'm gonna focus on the middle part, which is the, um, Smarter Balanced Semitive Assessments for English Language Arts and Math. So this is the overall score district-wide. Um, as you can see, about fifty-six percent of our students met or exceeded standard in Language Arts, and about thirty-five percent, um, met or exceeded in Mathematics. This is the trend over five years. As you can see, we slightly dipped last year. Um, however, it's pretty much remained the same. Twenty seventeen has been the highest, um, percentage points thus far. For, um, Mathematics, again, twenty seventeen has been the highest, but it's still kinda like a bell curve. And, you know, we've dipped again just a little bit, um, but it's still higher than, you know, the initial, um, assessment at the beginning of, of twenty fifteen. Here's the comparison for English Language Arts. Um, it's a comparison among, um, our district, the San Mateo County District, and it's only for their eleventh grade students and the state of California. And each of the bar represents each of the, um, the years it was given. And according to this chart, again, we're not, you know, really that far off with, um, the state of California. But this is the first time that we've dipped in ELA for, um, below than the, um, the state's level. Here is, um, the comparison in the math area. As you can see, again, only thirty-five percent of our students met or exceeded standard. Um, our scores are a little above the state's average, but below than, um, San Mateo County. Some of the ethnicity trends. Um, so again, this is broken down by every year, so five years, and it's broken down by ethnicity. You will not see, um, Native Americans, um, and Pacific Islanders as part of this cohort because they have, um, less than ten students. And you will also be able to tell that for, um, African-American students, we only have four years of data because last year, we had, um, less than ten students as part of that cohort, and they don't give us data if, um, the number of students is less than ten. Um, and I just wanna point out, you know, with this graph, that equity, um, between Asians and African-Americans and Asians and Latinos, and this has been, um, persistent year after year. Here's, um, the comparison in math. And again, as you can see, even, um, the gap is wider in math. More Asian students and African-American and Hispanic and Latino. And to compare the gap, again, I had to use, um, last year's data because we didn't have it this year. Um, the gap increased for both math and, um, Language Arts. Same thing for Hispanics. The, um, gap also increased, um, from twenty-one percent to forty-two percent in, in English Language Arts and thirty-four percent to fifty-seven percent in Mathematics. For English Language Fluency Trends, I just wanna remind you that EL stands for English Learner. Um, IFAP stands for Initially Fluent as English Proficient. RFAP means Reclassified as Fluent English Proficient. And I'm just gonna back that IFAP means that they, um, indicated another language other than English on their home language survey. They took an assessment, um, for the very first time that they entered one of our districts, and then when they took that test, they passed it. And so they're initially fluent as English proficient. For RFAP, which is Reclassified as Fluent English Proficient, um, when they came in, they took that test first. They did not pass it the first time. So what happens is that every year, they have to take the assessment and pass that assessment along with passing another assessment. So we've used the English Language Gains. But they also have to get at least a C in English and a two-point-oh GPA. So getting reclassified is, you know, pretty tough, um, statewide. And EO is English-only, and when they fill out their home language survey, they put English in all four fields. Um, so I just wanna point out on this slide, again, the, the gap, um, between English learners and non-English learners. That's for English Language Arts, and this is for math. And this graph, basically, you know, it's not that much, but they're doing, um, a little better in math than in English Language Arts. Our student, um, trends for students with disability. Um, this had been the trend over five years, and we had actually decreased, um, the gap from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, from forty-two to forty percent in English Language Arts. And we've slightly increased the gap in math. Um, but as you can see, only six percent of our students with disabilities, um, met or exceeded the standard. For socio-economically disadvantaged students, um, this is one student group that had decreased the gap from twenty-four percent to fifteen percent in ELA. And it also decreased in Mathematics from nineteen percent to sixteen percent. Here's a comparison of each of the school site. As you can see, Jeff has pretty much stayed around the same, um, percentage points. Oceana had dipped slightly. Um, same thing with Terranova. Um, Thornton pretty much remained the same except for the twenty-seventeen year, and Westmore also decreased in ELA. Same trends for math. Jeff is about the same. Oceana also dipped. Um, Terranova dipped. So did, um, Thornton remained with zero percent, and Westmore also dipped. So some of the summary of findings, um, the overall score slightly dipped in ELA in math, but overall, it remained flat. And this is, um, true of the results for the state of California. Um, the achievement gaps widened over time in all ethnic groups, um, not just Hispanic and African-Americans. And there's a huge and persistent achievement gap between English learners and non-English learners. Um, the gaps between students with disabilities and students without disabilities decreased, and English learners posted the lowest proficiency rates. Some of our next step is to analyze the student group's scores at the school sites and come up with some possible root causes and action steps on how to address, um, the discrepancy. Monitor, and, monitor the implementation of our current scope and sequence. Administer benchmark assessments and review the results. Administer the actual practice test so that students are familiar with the exam. Um, again, the last time that our eleventh grade students took the test was in eighth grade. Um, and finally, improve, um, the messaging to parents, students, and staff of the, um, importance of this exam. And that is it.
Questions for Ms. Baca.
I, Catch, why wasn't there data on the African-American students?
If there are ten or less students in the cohort, um, then they don't give us, um, the data. So there's, um, last year, I believe either nine, there are only nine African-Americans in the eleventh grade year. In the whole, yeah, district. Yeah.
Thank you. My kids graduated.
It was like two of them?
At once? Right. Just mess with the numbers.
The, um, I mean, the staff turnover certainly is a contributing factor as well. I know you didn't mention it, but I know that is, that would make sense.
And, you know, I, I also wanna point out, you know, what I, talk about staff turnover. Um, I wanna point out like the administration's, um, turnover from seventeen to eighteen to eighteen to nineteen, that there was a fifty-two percent retention rate for administrators. So our vice principals that, you know, that helped facilitate this exam were fairly new with the assessment system. Um, and so, you know, we need to do a better job in making sure that, um, we're supporting them in this administration.
Uh, I just wanna comment on the way we administer. So I only have the experience of last year. But I don't feel the test scores are reflective of the work our teachers have done or what our students know because, um, I don't know that teachers have been trained and administrators have supported um, giving those practice tests in class. So I can speak for a couple of schools. Students went in never taking a practice test, and that's problematic. Um, there is also an issue with the way that we set up the schedules. You know, when you, when you're only given an hour in a class to work on one of those two tests, part of that time is collecting students' calculators, giving them the Chromebooks, going over the instructions. They start the test. They just barely get into the test, and then it's time to close down the class again. So I'd be interested in hearing from our, our seniors tonight, but I feel that we could do a better job with the way we prepare students for the actual technical part of taking the test and helping the teachers understand their role in preparing students for that. Aside from that, as a statistician, I just have issues with this test in general. And there was a big report last year, a big push to, um, go to more of a growth model um, rather than, than the averaging of student scores. Um, so it'll be interesting to see how California comments after they look at the flat scores for the state as well. I just don't feel students are invested in the eleventh grade test either. I mean, I, I think students were more interested in the PSAT and the SAT than they were this eleventh grade test.
For the CASP, I'm, I'm pretty sure a lot of people just like didn't take it very seriously because, one, it's on the computer, right? So it's like a different format they're not used to, so it's not as comfortable when they're taking it. I know my math class, we did practice a little bit for the math part, but I didn't think anyone practiced for English. And yeah, I know, like, overall, students, like, were not too concerned with, like, preparing for the CASP test.
Yeah, especially since it, it doesn't affect us in any way. Like, the thing about the PSAT and the SAT is that those are crucial for college. Like, everyone I know has studied for the SAT in some way, whether it's, you know, night before or taking a long course. But nobody studies for the CASP, and I really, I don't think that it's a good representation of what we can do. Like, not only, as you mentioned, because of the way it's administered, but also because, like, it doesn't have any impact on us, which my English teacher, um, actually brought to our class's attention, that she's like, yeah, it may not have any academic effect on, like, you personally, but that it's, she said it was responsible for, like, how much funding we get and things like that. I don't know. I, I don't remember if that's exactly what she said, but that it does, like, have weight, that it is, like, necessary. So I, I just have really mixed feelings about it because I feel like, like, people don't take it seriously. So I feel like it doesn't really help a whole lot. Like, there isn't a lot of credit that you can put to it. Cause I know that even, like, the, like, my friends that are the most, like, invested in their education don't take this test as seriously as the SAT. So I just feel like there should be some better way to, to analyze where the schools are at, whether that's on the state level, uh, you know, changing this test. I, I was actually thinking that if they use the SAT scores as a way to measure instead because, you know, then people are more invested in that anyway. That I just feel like this is one extra thing that people don't really take seriously.
But the thing that we can ignore in the data are the gaps. So one that, all of them are startling to me. I'm concerned about them. But the huge gap between English learners and English-only in math, the gap shouldn't be that big. It just shouldn't be that big. And that's, I think that has a lot to do with new teachers, turnover teachers. Um, need to be thinking about that.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Um, I actually have some classmates who told me that they were just kind of clicking random buttons on the CASP, and they weren't taking it seriously. And about the, um, um, SAT being taken seriously, I agree that people do study for it, but I know that there are some people in, um, our schools who, um, from, from my personal experience, um, I know that a lot of people skipped it, the SAT day, and they also, um, there's someone in my class who also, like, just did a few questions and stopped doing it. And I feel like, rather than, um, just giving it out to all the students, students should be able to sign up for it so that we don't waste the, the money that some students may not want to use.
I feel like some of them kinda get skewed results though, because like, every. At least how I'm interpreting it, it is that this is kind of trying to analyze all of the students. And I feel like if we did kind of like a, a sign-up type thing. And I feel like if we did kind of like a signup type thing, it'd only be like the academic students that would sign up for that. Like, there would be people that don't really, aren't really invested in their education that would be like, oh, I don't want to go take that test. So, I don't know, I just feel like there should be a better system to get more accurate data.
Yeah. Pertaining to the content of the test itself, it gets harder and harder for me to care about the test if mo, if some of it I'm just not understanding at all. Is it supposed to be based off of what everyone in California should be knowing? Because I even asked some of the top students at Jeff how they felt about it. They even said, I don't understand some of these questions. And it just sort of, it results to just randomly clicking on whatever.
So question, so the lack of understanding is, was the question itself like, was the question confusing? Or was it more like, we didn't understand, we didn't, we just didn't have that knowledge? Or the setup of the question and or the, the, the subject of the question?
Uh, pertaining to math, it was more based off of knowledge we just don't know. And same thing with, I know this, this presentation didn't cover science. Same thing with science, there were lies that most of the students did not know. Pertaining to English, some of the prompts or what it was asking us to do was a little bit confusing at times. Because sometimes we didn't know if it was asking this or that, or what is it really clarifying? And with just all that added in, it just made it, the test seemed sort of not as... Well, I, it just didn't incline students to take it as seriously if they're having a hard time understanding what they're looking at. Yeah.
That I actually like about the SAT, like, I know there's been a lot of talk recently about it, like, just completely going away. But what I liked about the SAT was the consistency of the types of questions that you could just kind of tell like what the type of question was, what it was asking. But on the CASP, I had to like try harder to actually understand what they wanted me to do. So I just felt like the, the actual, like, phrasing of the questions could have been better. Because I feel like if, if you want to test someone on the material, you have to be really clear with like what you want the person to do. So I feel like it's a little confusing in, you know, like, if people are even... Like, people might understand how to do the material, but it might just be phrased really weirdly. And I think the whole thing with it being on the computers too, I hate doing math on the computer. I just, I can't. Like, when you have to click a bunch of like buttons just to get a square root symbol, it's just, it's annoying and, you know, yeah, it's terrible. So, you know, I feel like if it could be in paper form, that would be really nice.
So, and for the English language learning students, they're taking it in English. And so if it's confusing to someone who's a native English speaker, like, what are we doing? And so, you know, okay.
Students that have arrived in the United States for one year or less, they're exempt, but they're pretty much the only ones. They're exempt for English language arts, but not for math.
Wow. And you still, there's still a lot of reading in there. Okay. So I, you know, I saw the scores and before I panicked, like, I just want to hold judgment until I get the PSAT, SAT scores. And then I feel like I just want to have a more substantive talk once I have both scores in front of me. And then we can talk about it because, I mean, I hear it repeatedly. I mean, there's no student that I've spoken to that said, I'm going to take it seriously. And, you know, and my kids, I was like, all right, they're not like you. Stay away, take the test, take the test. Uh, but, you know, the kids have said over and over and over and over that they don't take it seriously. So it's hard for me to then say, let's make a whole bunch of, you know, policy educational shifts off a test that I'm being repeatedly told I'm just clicking a button. So, you know, I'm, I'm waiting for, I would rather just wait for the PSAT and then reengage in this conversation about what the next steps.
The CSTs are not perfect. But one of the things, if you look back at the way we administer the CSTs, you saw growth year over year. You saw a huge growth the first couple of years as people were, teachers are grappling with new standards. And as they were getting results and using data to help them decide what they needed to teach in class. This test has been very difficult for teachers to look at and figure out what do we have to do so that students perform better. It hasn't been as useful. The other thing is, is the longer we can wait to test students, we tested so early. I mean, a real strategy of many districts is to go as late in the window as you can. If I had had two more weeks as a math teacher, some of the content I could have taught. But you've got the whole year's standards in one test. And, you know, it's affected by how the student responds. So if you, if John had come across a question he didn't know, it automatically goes down. And so it's kind of, I know, it's really important for us to think about how to strategically, if it matters to us, strategically move our assessments as late in the window as possible, especially math.
When did we administer last year? It's usually in April, right?
Last year, it was administered late in March. And April was science because AP was in May. So this year, we, you know, with Dr. Deloria's recommendation, we did push it, you know, as far to like the end of April as possible.
After break.
After the break.
Is that, is that the latest week to go is end of April?
We tried to avoid AP.
APs, I know that, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you think, because the criticism in the past has been that you don't want teachers teaching to the test. You don't want, you want this to be organic, that this is a real assessment of what the students are learning. And so even though we are giving free PSAT and free SAT every year, the practice from that is not even going to help with this because it's totally different.
Well, the technical part is different. You're absolutely right about that. I agree with that. And actually, if the test really was written based on the standards and the rigor level of the standards, then I would want teachers teaching to the test because they'd be teaching the content. But I don't know that that's true.
Test administration for all sites for English language arts, math, and the science is between April fifteenth and the thirtieth.
I don't know what that's going to do to improve student apathy towards the test, though.
It's not, right. I mean, I'm, you know, I feel about this guy.
All right. If nothing else, one story and twice, we will move on now to fifteen B one through nineteen, the assortment of BP and AR, Dr. Deloria.
Really quickly, sorry. So we're, the CSBA Ledge Day is January eleventh. So if you, students, if you can make it, that would be awesome. Because one of the things that we probably would bring up to them is this, that like they vote on this type of stuff. So if you could talk to them and tell them that you do not take this test seriously, stop trying to force it down our throats, like, that would be helpful.
We'd actually meet with our lawmakers.
January eleventh. It's going to be at the Samhain Town High School District.
Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not the CSBA Ledge Day, that's in March?
No, this is Samhain County. Yeah, and you are, you, same thing. You will, they, we just bring them here instead of driving up Sacramento, that's crazy.
So it's January eleven?
Yeah.
Okay, and then where is it?
It's at Samhain Town High School District. Yeah, and I'll have them, you know, we'll email it out to you, but just save that date because this would be a good topic to talk about.
She'll, she'll let the president of the Samhain County School Board Association know to email it out to you. Oh, it's the same person, never mind.
Yeah.
It was there.
No, no, it was late. We're punching.
No, I meant to do that. All right, moving on, fifteen B one through nineteen, Dr. Deloria, all the AR and BP.
So these are more from the student services. You'll notice that we're adding a number that we didn't have. The only thing that really stands out for me is the one on immunizations because we weren't quite up to date in the district, so we're going to fix that. So it's not enough just to update our policies and practices. It's really important that we go back and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And we've taken care of that. And I didn't receive any questions from board members on any of this.
I mean, the, the only question, it wasn't a question, but just more, I mean, I'm fine with approving the student dress code, right, because it's just an addition of certain things. But at the same time, I still feel like some of the language is ambiguous. It could be interpreted in a multitude of different ways, so... And I know just the school sites are doing a lot to loosen up the dress code a bit, but I still think, like, it's, it's really ambiguous.
But I think this language to help clarify, I don't know, a lot of the dress code has been sexist and...
Yeah, yeah.
Taking care of some of those things.
Yeah, so it's still, so I don't know, and I don't want to know if we need to change IR, but I would be interested at some point, not now, to get a report on what each of the sites are doing. You know, to, you know, what are the, the dress code situation at each of the sites? To see if it's matching up, like, that's how I would prefer to change this, if we needed to change it. But I'm fine with approving this now and just amending it later. All right. Or we're not voting on it, but, you know.
When we get to it, yeah. Okay, if nothing else, then we'll move on to sixteen Business Services, sixteen A one Resolution Number twenty nineteen twenty slash three, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, twenty eighteen election series, being the principal amount of twenty-eight million dollars and approving related documents and actions.
That was nice.
Yeah.
Good job.
You're welcome.
President Lee, good evening, everyone. I just want to acknowledge that we have Dale Scott, our financial advisor, and Chick Adams, our bond counsel in the audience to answer any questions on anything in section sixteen as we go through these. As President Lee introduced, the first item before you is to authorize the issuance of the remainder of our twenty eighteen bond funds for our faculty and staff housing. It's estimated that the principal will be about twenty-eight million dollars. Any questions?
Step, all right.
Motion to approve this one.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, yeah, there better not be anybody opposed. Fantastic, that's a big one. That's a really big one.
I have a really silly question.
Yeah.
Where it has comments under sixty?
Yeah, I saw.
I don't know what that is.
Emoji?
I don't know how that happened.
What is she talking about? Somebody explain it to Dr. D.
Looks like a sad face.
Yeah.
Should be a happy face.
What is that sad face?
I don't know how that happened.
Did you plant that to see if you were paying attention?
Sixteen A two, approval of Resolution twenty nineteen twenty slash four relating to the COP for sixty-four million dollars to finance the teacher and staff housing project and refinance solar lease payments and approving related documents and actions, Ms. Van Rophorst.
So, as President Lee introduced, this is to authorize the district to use a financial strategy to borrow funds to complete the rest of our employee housing. And this would be paid back with the rent from the faculty and staff housing. The other component that is new is that we learned that all of our properties have liens against them because of our solar projects from two thousand eight. So the money will also be used to buy one of the set of solar panels, probably from Jefferson High School. And then we will own those, we'll have to do the maintenance, but we will also stop paying the lease on those. And so that money can then be used to repay it, and it'll allow us to have the collateral we need.
Great, fantastic. Is there, are there any other questions?
Thanks for the creative thinking on this.
Yes.
Move to proof.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, fantastic. Sixteen A three, Resolution twenty nineteen twenty slash five, order an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds, establishing specs of the election order and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on March third, twenty twenty. Ms. Van Rophorst.
Thank you. This ballot measure would ask voters to reauthorize the bond funds that they previously approved in June twenty fourteen and allow the, to also be used in addition to, for our school site projects to be used for the construction of a new district office. The board has been exploring ways to build a new district office, and we had talked about developing Ceramani Del Rey to generate income that could then pay back a loan that we would use to build the district office. But this would allow us to not have to take out that loan, and therefore, when we develop Ceramani Del Rey, the income generated by this property can be used for any district purposes. So, such as improving salaries or student programs or facilities, any purpose. So this way, we don't have the interest from a loan and we don't have the restrictions that come with when you borrow money. Obviously, you have to pay it back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. And finally, item sixteen A four, approval of Resolution twenty nineteen twenty slash six, order an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds, establishing specs of the election order and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on November third, twenty twenty. Ms. Van Rophorst.
Thank you. So this resolution would approve a ballot measure that would ask voters to approve authorized bond funds. It would generate up to one hundred and sixty-three million for our district for capital improvements. So this kind of continues our bond projects that we've been doing, improvements to our campuses. And this would extend the marginal tax rate so that as our previous bond projects start falling off the tax rolls, this, the new bond program would be put into place so that people continue to pay the same tax rate. But we still are generating more funds for our facilities.
Need to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, fantastic, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Intervene here, Dale and Chick. All right, item seventeen, consideration of any future agenda items.
Ms. Baka, do we have a date when you're going to share our annual PSAT and SAT data?
I don't have the scores yet, but once I receive it, it will probably be early December.
December seventh. Yeah, probably January, okay.
Can we, and it doesn't have to be this year, it could be next year. Can we get an update? Can we have Circle Up come back in? We haven't heard from them in a little while.
And then, please schedule an update from Chartwell's about... I know that you gave us an update.
I would like to recommend maybe that we do it in the spring. I definitely want them to come do an update, but I'd like to give them a little bit more time.
Especially if they come up.
And there's no smoothie machine. Can they have two updates? Like, one this semester and one in the spring also? Because, like, I don't know, yes, the food has changed, but there's some things like, I don't know, students don't complain.
That was covered a lot in the student advisory council. The quality of food or the length of lines, or both?
Well, I know we have run out before, we've run out of food. And like, I'm pretty sure, like, one of my friends found like hair in their food, something like that.
And then I think sometimes kids are swiping and other times they're... There's too much time taken punching in numbers. And, but I've heard last night the food's great, and...
So do we, do we want them to just, like, so they don't have to come to the...
We can do an earlier update too, if you want. I mean...
Or do we want them to just go to student advisory?
Or they can come to student advisory.
Do you want them here or do you want them with the full student advisory?
I think, yeah, student advisory, because then...
Like, maybe we can have like the, the first one be with student advisory and then the one like later.
And I think that makes sense, so they can get that feedback and start working on it. So by the time they come in spring, they'd be...
Thank you. Anything else, anyone?
I've just been noticing that there's been a lot of like really cool things at other schools that I feel like it'd be really helpful for the schools to like communicate more about what kind of different initiatives they're doing at their schools. Because I feel like, especially like with the flex time at Jefferson, I feel like that'd be really helpful at like all the schools. And there's just so much stuff that, like, the different schools are doing, like environmentally and just with the different clubs, that I feel like it'd be really cool if we could have more of that implemented in the other schools. Because I know that there's a lot of stuff, like especially that I've heard at Jefferson recently, that I'm like, oh, we should do that at Terranova. And I'm like, wait, we should do that at all the schools. So I just feel like having a more, because like, we're, like, yeah, we're the individual schools, but we're also like you.
we're, like, yeah, we're the individual schools, but we're also, like, a unified district, so I feel like we should try to get more unified and, yeah.
Great. Thank you. All right. So we we adjourned tonight's meeting in memory of Nativity Dad Kulaun Fong, who passed away too soon on October twenty-sixth. Ms. Natty was a fixture in the Daly City community for more than thirty years as an advocate for public schools, families, and many causes. Her volunteer career in PTA began when her children were in elementary school at John F. Kennedy. As her involvement grew every year, in her gentle but persuasive way, she recruited other parents to volunteer and serve in PTA. She was a mentor and friend to many, always more than willing to lend a hand and offer her knowledge, encouraging others to venture out of their comfort zone to find their voice and confidence. She was a leader and past president of the Jefferson Council, continuing to serve long after she retired a few years ago.
Poor times.
Passionate about fostering strong family-school connections and community outreach, Natty served from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand one as president of the seventeenth district of the California PTA, representing more than eighteen thousand members in San Mateo County. Natty loved to dance hula, scrapbook, cook Asian dishes, and host parties. Natty's vibrant and generous spirit will be missed by all who knew her. Our heartfelt condolences due to her husband Raymond, her children Loretta and Mark, and her extended Ohana.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at nine thirteen PM.
Thank you.